Hawk Creek, remember we had. Was it the Windermere?
It's the Windermere area that we've got some questions about Windermere down there.
They were happy over there and they wanted, so they were very happy at Hawk Creek. And they, Lakeside, and they wanted more. So.
What about the cottages? They're not moving cottages at Dave's Creek?
Cottages, where is that?
It's right there by Trammell Estates.
It's right by Trammell, it seems like it's right in that group.
Yeah, it does.
It's.
Can anybody address the cottages, Joey? Do you? Should we just put that on the list of?
It looks like it's in the same, it's two ninety A.
Yeah, two ninety A.
Two ninety A.
It might be a part of what's being moved, it's hard to, uh.
Two ninety A is one hundred and twenty-two, one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-eight, but.
That looks like it includes, that looks like includes.
That's Trammell and cottages and like Stockton.
And, so it's all together.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's being moved, because if it's in the same study area, it will be moved. We just didn't get any comments from.
Oh, okay, that's right, that's why they're not listed, okay.
Our list here is only. Always only comments.
So they are, okay, they're part of the move.
Yeah, as I say, I don't.
I was gonna say, they look like they're right in between all that and we didn't have anything, okay.
Yeah, they're in the study area, so they are.
All down the same road.
And we didn't, Trammell, we didn't hear from Trammell.
So, any other comments about the Hawk Creek?
Just wanna see how many Trammell Estates people we heard from.
There you go. Okay.
We'll just look that up quick here. We heard from one Trammell Estates.
Okay.
Two, I'm sorry, three. Um.
Okay, so not very many.
The one bought their house two weeks ago from Gwinnett. Um. Okay, so we had total of three.
Okay, so not very many of your, when you're talking about a hundred and ninety-six kids being moved, we didn't have that much feedback, really.
No.
And again, they hopefully understand how overcrowded Dave's Creek is.
So they, they're gonna come out on the Trammell and go across. Now, one of the concerns we did get, kind of, not just this at the middle school, was crossing of twenty, which at first I thought, oh, that's legitimate, that's a heavily traveled road. However, we already have several subdivisions that are already doing that in the existing.
Yeah, we talked about that in the past.
Well, that's all Lakeside, we're already, we already have bus transportation doing all that, they're all going to Lakeside already.
From a transportation point of view, do you have issues with twenty in the morning?
No, well, we're efficient.
Yeah.
Are you able to handle it safely?
We have issues with all the roads in, for a second.
We'll be fine.
You'll be fine? So you, in going through these suggestions, not somewhat the suggestion, but the draft, you've already spent a lot of time with the committee?
We, we didn't see anything that was unusual or something that we aren't giving somewhere.
Okay.
So it would be more of the same?
Yes.
Okay, that's important, thank you. Okay.
Okay, the next, we're still sticking with Dave's Creek, but we're moving them to Sharon Elementary. And there you've gotten, uh, this map came, they sent it all to the, to all to us, showing the areas and asked us, instead of moving all them, they, there was a lot of people, obviously have been there sixteen years since the school opened, and they're suggesting we move James Creek instead. Unfortunately, James Creek, they didn't, they didn't point out all of James Creek. James Creek also goes on the other side of the road, almost right up to the school, didn't you say their sidewalks? And they can actually be, possibly be walking to the school, this is all James Creek here, too.
I added up the, um, study areas for the, what we called the Sharon Walk area.
Okay.
If you add up Estates of Old Atlanta, which was three-five-three B, Ivy Falls, three-two-two C, Northern Oaks, three-five-four A and B, Old Atlanta Commons, three-eighty-two B, Sharon Springs, three-fifty-five, and Sharon Walk, three-eighty-two A, that came up to, add them individually, about a hundred and eighty-five. And staff had broken down for us earlier, the James Creek subdivision alone, which is that, right on the right side of the, on Windermere Parkway there, there's a total of five hundred and forty-four students in that one subdivision alone, of which three hundred and eighteen are in elementary.
Just in James Creek.
Just in the James Creek. So, um.
Three hundred and eighteen elementary.
So again, so this is more of a, so this is the other side, this is the other half of moving out of Dave's Creek. Half, some are going to Hawk Creek and some are going to Sharon. Sharon currently at eight hundred and sixty-three with a capacity of eleven eighty-seven is, has got room. And with this change, they're gonna be gaining a total of two hundred and thirty-five, which still puts them below capacity, so they still have space.
So the Sharon Walk area, it's, does that, that's everybody, right? So that'd be two hundred and thirty-five students in this whole area. You said one eighty-five, so that'd be two thirty-five?
There.
Is there, is there anything else, else included besides this whole area?
That is going to.
That is going to Sharon.
From Dave's Creek.
Ooh, in fact Sharon, uh, no, we'd have, we'd have to subtract out, we'd have to subtract out the Glen, the Glencrean down there, I'm sorry.
Which is roughly fifty-nine or sixty.
Right. Because we've already got them.
So who else? Is that all of them?
Taken out?
Is that all the ones?
Because the net changed, because we've, we've got them taken out and then we're adding back in.
What about, right here?
Well, these, because these are with the recommendations.
Now, there's, yeah. There's also.
These are with the recommendations, so.
Right, but there's also not, um.
Trying to compare this to this.
What's the name of that one? Um, this also includes on James Burgess, um, not cast, not Champions Run, not the right-hand side of the road, but the left side, which is, starts with a T, what's that subdivision?
Ooh, are you sure that's not the middle of the school level?
Is that the middle?
That's the middle school level.
That's right, that's Riverwatch, I'm sorry.
If you look at this, this drawing and compare it to our drawing, little red mark here, that's, that's moving, it looks like the same.
But right here, that's.
Okay, well, that settles Sharon, okay.
Okay.
So Sharon, so that's fifty kids.
That's right, it settles, never mind.
Right here, that's fifty kids.
So the new numbers we're looking at.
Yeah, so that's fifty kids, you'd subtract that out of two eighty-five and you, two thirty-five and you'd get one eighty-five.
I think part of the difference is, the numbers we're looking at on screen now are updated, these are new numbers, correction, Mr. Perkel?
This is with, yeah, this is draft, with, uh, with the recommendations.
With the recommendations.
So it's perfect, you take the two thirty-five minus the fifty and you get the one eighty-five that you just stated to us.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Okay, so it makes sense.
So it's fifty in that other area. So you're saying James Creek has three hundred and eighteen elementary?
That's big.
On their own, that is huge.
I mean, that's almost a third of Dave's Creek by itself.
Exactly.
And it's right there by it, so.
I know, I feel, I do struggle with that. I struggle with the Sharon Walk area, that they, they have been there a long time and I appreciate, I truly do.
Well, I think it's balanced it. Well, they're a national school of excellence now, that's, that's really hard.
Well, I've worried about Ivy Falls and Northern Oaks because of where they have to come out on Old Atlanta Road. But the staff said that wasn't a problem.
You're saying there was no issues with transportation?
There's traffic issues there with Sharon Middle at let-out days, particularly when it rains. But that's, it's south, I'm sorry, South Middle, yeah.
We're talking about where we're kinda have to.
Northern Oak and Ivy Falls would be turning left to go to, to Sharon now.
Yeah, but there's a, uh, there's a left turn arrow there.
Mm-hmm.
And the, coming the opposite way, I believe is the subdivision that, that that kind of dead is, that dead and due to, it shouldn't be a problem. We've, uh, we negotiated that for Lambert, I believe. And that's not that big of a problem.
Okay.
Okay, good.
You would, I see your concern, you think it would be, but it's not as bad as.
That's what, I just, it's that curve right there at North, Northern Oaks, it's bad.
So all, are all the comments, these are all together, right? These are all in the same area?
If, I mean.
Yeah, they are, they're all.
There's no, is there any other opt, they had, they had put out to move James Creek.
James Creek, but they didn't, they didn't realize that James Creek was also across the road. And see, this is James Creek, they, they labeled two twenty-four C and two twenty-four A, but there's also two twenty-two A across.
Right, they're across the road.
Three twenty-four and three twenty-two.
Three twenty-one C.
And look how big that is, yeah. So they left out a huge part of the subdivision that is still James Creek.
And there's no.
So they really don't have the same.
There's nothing else to move, but.
That was, yeah, Anne just said this, I don't see what else, what other options there are.
Right, because they are the southwestmost part and it's Sharon that has the room. We can't move them to Charlotte Point, we can't take this area and move to Charlotte Point, because Charlotte Point is full. And Sharon has the room, Sharon's sitting at eight sixty-three. They have room for about three hundred kids.
Does, how many assistant principals does Sharon have right now? Just one? So with this change, Sharon will have two.
Two.
So that's something that is, that's a good move for them, it's helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, I kinda, I just don't see any other options.
No, there isn't, that's the problem. Okay.
So Anne had mentioned, in the past, there had been hope for another elementary up in the Dave's Creek area. So is that something that could, might, may be in our long-term plan again, that perhaps have another one in that general area?
Well, it could, could be potentially long-term. Currently, we don't own property there and that's not on our upcoming list of projects.
But just looking at what's gonna happen with James Creek, I, I don't, where are they gonna go?
How many are unbuilt, as far as, do we know, the number of, it's just most of them? I mean, the three hundred and eighteen is current students, we're saying?
Which three eighteen the?
There's three eighteen elementary in James Creek.
Oh, that's current.
Just in James Creek. It's current and I'm just saying, are there half the pieces?
Is there a lot more being built at James Creek?
Oh, in the James Creek?
Is there like half the houses built out, or?
They have, in the last year, the western side of the road, which is the numbers, they weren't that, like a year and a half ago?
That's pretty much built out.
It was all piped, it was all piped, and now it is just up there. And so there's actually not a huge amount left, but that is filled in in the last year, it's just been amazing to see that transition. But there is more coming.
But there's not a huge amount at James Creek to be built still.
Still coming?
No, that's not much left there.
Okay, that was my question, right.
But there is, trying to think, on the edge here, trying to picture out Lambert, give me a second. Yeah, Sharon, there is more coming into Sharon with the growth, there's eighty roughly, and that's a question mark, eighty-some odd homes just got approved across from Lambert, there's fifty across the street that were pre-approved, ready to go, and there's another zoning at the end of the street right now.
On Nichols Road?
On Nichols Road, that is.
All going to Sharon?
That'd have to be on that. It'd be blue, yep. Well, that's, that was the one question we had to the committee, was the breakdown. Remember on our original list, and this is a good thing we should clarify while we're at this little section here? Where are we here? Well, that's, that's the middle school, you wanna talk about that when we get to middle?
Right, once we get to middle.
Well, we'll wait, we'll wait on that, never mind, hold that thought.
And this hits us at a hard time, too, because I talked to Nancy when we came in tonight and we were talking about the future, looking at our new facilities plan, taking that and mapping it out and looking at the trending for the future as to what happens when we open that new school, what kind of decreases, what increases, what do we think we're pulling from? The hard part is, we're trying to do our FTE counts right now, and so we're in flux and, and we're still growing, like crazy right now. So it's real hard to get a good fa, stable foundation to do this on.
Yeah, you know, we might think in the future that maybe we don't, we need to build some smaller elementary schools to fill in. I know it's not efficient, but we've got mashroom that can only hold six hundred and ninety-five students, where there others around it hold over a thousand. If mashroom was the size of the others, we might be okay, but it's not. So, I mean, it's just a thought.
All right. Well, I struggle with that one, but I just don't see.
I don't either. Trade office, not there. Okay, where are we now?
Well, so numerically, James Creek isn't an option, because there's just too many students to not, and they're literally like, probably point one, point two miles walk school, so.
Yeah.
Right.
So they have to stay there. And so there's no, there's no way to add up.
And they're the next.
And with the increased growth, we've gotta give Dave Creek some capacity to grow, because I think that's where the area is, it's coming. And I'm surprised how dense it is already.
There's four zonings right there.
I remember in the late nineties when we split off Dave's Creek from Big Creek. You know, we'd start at six hundred at Big Creek and went to about eleven hundred.
That's right.
That wasn't that long ago.
Yeah. Oops, we need some more maps. I've lost my key. All right.
So down in Sharon Walk, that's it all that?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Windermere.
Yeah.
Windermere. This was kind of the hardest one to get organized, wasn't it?
Well, we, um, we don't know the names of the different places, like this Osterly of Windermere.
They're not subdivisions, they're all.
They're at Dave's Creek, we're saying not change them, and they're saying send us to Hawk Creek, so I don't even sure which number Osterly is. And they're saying Windermere are gonna keep together, now, we did split it, but I'm not sure exactly how, I don't remember how Windermere was, was split in the end.
That was one of our questions, yeah.
How they're gonna handle. Why Trammell to Hawk Creek and not us? Windermere, South Gate, as, as you say, we, we've got those listed, we gave you copies of those, I guess maybe give it to the committee and maybe tell us by study area which, where those four lie, and then.
Can you just tell us about Windermere, can you just help us out with Windermere a little bit, just how it's broken up?
Can tell, yeah, because somebody look at these study areas and see. Sure.
We just.
Yeah, just look at those, so we know, yeah, because we know little parts of Windermere go, they go to two different places, but we're not sure where. Because it's hard to tell on the maps here.
When they gave us input, they gave us specific sections and we don't.
Right.
We can't tell what it was.
Newgate's the only section on here, right?
Right, that's the only one we can, we see split out. So we'll give this all to the committee for next week. And we'll make our decisions next week if we make any other changes.
It probably goes right in there.
Yeah, it's just hard to tell.
And this was a mix, there was those who were slated to shift, there were, and stay.
Right.
Let's see. It was, it's a mix, the ones that were slated, the ones that were slated to move wanted to stay, the ones that were slated to move. What, it was a mix?
Some are going out of a district anyway, because they're going onto Lakeside, so it was a, again, if you think about the numbers in Windermere, really very few comments.
Yeah, let me just look that quick.
Put that in perspective, I think, too.
Let me just, let me just look up that quick, so we know what we're looking at here.
Okay, I'll go back and see where we are.
So Castleton was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven from Castleton. Which were.
And they wanna stay at Dave's Creek, so obviously they are, they go to Dave's Creek right now, and this other one's.
The Osterly, let me get that one.
The Osterly is, is staying there.
Osterly, there was just the one, their comment was.
Corey says they say ten in fifth.
They say nine, their map has Osterly, Windermere remaining at Dave's Creek. Next year, we will have only nine kids from Osterly in elementary schools. Four of those nine already are out of District two Hawk Creek and will stay there for years to come. They recommend, so they're happy. So Osterly is actually happy, that's right.
They want to stay at.
They're happy with the change, they said, wait a minute, that doesn't make sense.
We're not changing it.
That's what, they're not changing, so they don't, did they misinterpret it?
They're out of District to Hawk Creek?
Oh, they're at, they're saying, thank you, please do it, they want to also go.
Yeah.
It's my, their, their choice is to also go.
Go to Hawk Creek, because they're already doing out of districts, is what they're saying.
Yeah.
So that'd be nice to.
And then they get bus transportation if they.
It'd be nice to know how many, and where are they really, and how many are there for Osterly?
And is the prob, it might be something we could change.
If it's this area right here, it'd make a lot of sense, I mean, they're right there, they're just close there to our Dave's Creek.
It might be a small area that makes, that makes sense.
So.
I'll just give that back to the committee, check if that's the case.
So, so Hawk. Yeah, would it be helpful, because Hawk Creek has some room to go?
Yeah, Hawk Creek has some, has, still has some growth.
See if it makes sense to move them, if they are out of District, go ahead.
Yeah, exactly.
So are you getting, are you keeping track of all these?
Yep, I gave them a copy of this, yeah.
Okay, well, okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, let's go back to middle schools now.
Everybody still awake out there with us?
South Middle to Lakeside first. Right, we've got that one, we've got that one area.
Brandon Hall? Page two. Page two, okay, good.
Yeah, that Brandon Hall, it's just the one big study group. Uh, sixty-nine middle school kids, and we're moving them to South Middle. Again, we're trying to even out, Lakeside has room, um, they will be at eleven eighty-nine, they're built for eleven eleven, I mean, they're built for ten thirty-seven, they're already at eleven eleven, it'll bring them to eleven eighty-nine. Again, it'll be over, but we're trying to redistribute the overpopulation at all the schools to make it easier for all the middle schools. So if, our idea is to even it out and put in some into Lakeside, if you look at their maps, out of South Middle, that is the closest area to Lakeside.
Well, and this is a severe issue, if you look at Riverwatch's numbers, they're fifteen, they'll be fifteen forty-three and they should be ten thirty-seven, so this is, this is.
Critical.
Critical change.
Critical that we do, do some shifting.
Yeah.
And if we move, Riverwatch, we can't move Riverwatch into Lakeside, again, if you look at the map.
Yeah, they're, even, even if we do all this, there's still gonna be two hundred and eighty, two hundred and seventy something over, so.
Yeah.
Over, right. Riverwatch, you cannot go, you cannot send any, anybody north of Riverwatch, because Riverwatch is the north end. So you have to pull from South Middle from the west, and that means.
Well, and then you gotta start watching your feeder patterns, too.
South Middle gets over, so you've gotta shift, you've gotta shift some to, to Lakeside. Yeah, right, we had to consider the.
Wow.
That. So if you wanna move on to, let's say, that's, that's the one area.
So you move Brandon Hall up.
One of their concerns, they, they did, we have a fair number of comments from them, just to make sure we address their thought. There was eight, that was Black Stock Mill, we had a lot, I wanna say roughly twenty. One of their concerns was the question about Highway twenty, but again, transportation feels comfortable that they're already doing that and you can do some more.
And we're already taking the elementary the same route. Moving them over to Hawk Creek.
So that's it? What else, so what else, what is this, then what's this one street, is there anything really there? Oh, that's like Gilbert, is that Gilbert? Yeah, it's Gilbert, that's, that's again, a very, a lot of development going on in there. A lot of development on that area.
So look at the. Put some more of the growth into.
Yes, that's gonna help.
Lakeside, which will help South Middle and Riverwatch.
That's gonna help a long-term problem, or a growing long-term problem.
Yep, it will be.
There is, you got the map there?
Oh, that one.
Yeah. Right in here, that's where all, the Dave's Creek and the Gilbert, that's where all those zonings are.
Okay.
All right. Well, so that, if, if somebody has to move into Lakeside, that's, that's.
That's the only logical place, that's, you can't pull from anywhere else.
At best, we'd have to do more than that to not, we, there's no other option, right?
Right.
What about? This odd section of Piney?
This one, right here?
But that's off, that's off Ronald Reagan Road, is there anything really there?
Uh, then I, you might be changing high school patterns, and when you get into there, you have to be, well, no, that would still be South.
But I'm trying to think of this, those are roads, but that's commercial, I don't think there's any, there's nothing there.
That's all commercial.
So there's no students.
There's some.
Actually, we can check, let's see what, let's see what the, that, that's all, I know it's commercial. What's, what is that?
What study group are you looking at?
That's what I'm trying to cross number.
Right across from Brandon, it's an area that.
Three twenty?
Oh, it's all, uh.
It's gotta be all, it's all commercial. Got Windermere, here we are, here we go, that would be two eighty-one. Yeah, two eighty-one.
Mm-hmm. Where you took my paper.
Did I take it? Yeah, I have it.
Two eighty-one I've got it here.
Two eighty-one is, I can't give her the name, that's too cheap. Actually, there's thirty-six students. It's got a picture.
It's likely an industrial area there.
It's very industrial. I cannot, I mean, there's a couple, there's a couple.
That's, um.
A couple of.
That's the quarry.
It's quarry, there's a couple of.
That's right there, yeah.
No, it's not.
Standalone homes, but what?
But that road, you meant.
No, that's the west side. It's all industrial, yeah, that's Piney Grove, or whichever crosses four hundred. So that's all industrial through there.
That's when you turn right, and it's.
Right, thirty-six.
That's where B O A moved.
Like the Babas or.
Yeah, that's that subdivision, that's, um, that cut through to South, that, there's a subdivision right there.
Oh, Pendley Road.
Yeah, but that's, no, it's not Pendley.
It's not that far up?
No, if you look at Ronald Reagan, and it comes into Old Atlanta, Ronald Reagan really goes out that way, and Old Atlanta, there's that, there's that road that's Brandon Road.
The, Brandon Road is farther south, in the blue section?
Yeah, that's farther south, down by one thirty-one.
Yeah, that's Pendley. So there, that, that's what I can see.
I drive home every day and it's all industrial.
Yeah. So it must be, oh, okay, that's why the numbers are, they're, right, it is, it's, the numbers are coming from the Brandon area, that's what, you're right, Anne.
Yeah.
Even, they're all in one section, but the biggest area is commercial and that's not, so that's not gonna.
It doesn't matter.
Well, thirty-six students is thirty-six students.
Let's see, so they're, just trying to look at where they are at Piney.
But you would be talking about Brandon.
But they're all, they are, if, if you come out of their subdivision, you're like, you're, you turn left, you're right there at Piney.
Where you're right there. That's right.
And we haven't touched Piney Grove Middle, I'll keep that in mind also, in.
Hmm.
In this process.
For them to come out and go over. That would not be, it would be a difficult route to get from that.
To get all the way to Lakeside.
To get, to get to Lakeside from there, I mean, look at it, we've just got Reagan, Reagan's, that'd be a crazy route.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be pretty difficult.
You have to cut through Windermere.
Which, that's, that's just painful. So I, I.
There you go, that area. Okay, we.
Do we need a seventh, can we have a seventh inning stretch?
Yeah, I think we're almost done.
Almost done.
Riverwatch to South Middle.
Riverwatch to South Middle on page five.
Yeah.
It's the last one.
Okay, and again, Riverwatch being basically almost thirty percent over there.
We have to take kids, so the, so the idea is, what are the closest people from Riverwatch that you can move into South Middle? That's the big picture, look at it.
Okay, so look at the.
And we.
Anne, it's Laurel Springs.
Run into Laurel Springs.
What does it mean redistrict Lambert also, fifty-fifty response?
What they're saying is, while you're doing this, why don't you also?
Take kids out of Lambert, because it's so overcrowded.
Take kids out of Lambert. Like, we had some comments from, like Grand Cascades, that said, take some Lambert people out and put them in South, into South High. But South High's just, actually, I think they're numerically.
Also overcrowded, yeah.
Also more, so.
Yeah, so.
We just got them back under control.
I think Lambert has more, um, ability to be overcrowded.
Yes.
Their building is better suited to be overcrowded than South.
Exactly. And they're both gonna be growing.
I mean, if they're both gonna be overcrowded.
And we talked about expansion and whatnot.
But both high schools are in our facility plan for some changes, so.
Exactly.
Long-term, we have, this is just to get us, this is to get us through.
We've got to get them to the high school.
All right, so we need to get Riverwatch.
Way down.
So we need to move into South, so we're moving
It looks like, what, two hundred and fifty kids?
Yeah, out of Riverwatch.
Two hundred and fifty kids are in the area we're talking about, which is
So Laurel Springs
Laurel Springs.
Has two hundred and fifty-five I'm sorry, two hundred and twenty-eight middle.
Middle school kids.
That's a lot. So that's going to help out Riverwatch.
Tremendously.
At the bulk of the
That'll make a strong feeder pattern, too, just, just them alone. It's not like you're just moving twenty kids here and there, right?
Right, because what, they're all
Trying to keep the whole subdivision.
They're at Sharon, and then all all to South and all to Lambert.
That was one of the feeder patterns, when you ran the numbers, this changed, improved the split, if I remember correctly. It made it a better split than what it is now.
You mean between the middle schools?
Yeah. So I got it in here. Asked a lot of questions. South Middle.
Because you'll have more
How many kids go to Lambert from South Middle?
Two Lambert from South Middle. Let's look at the
So if we add two hundred and seven over, that's
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's right. Because it's one people down there, and they have to go into South Middle.
I don't know the breakdown of that one.
Land-wise, it looks like about half and half, if I look at the old maps. I can't tell you number-wise, but land-wise, it looks like
In the current plan, South Middle to South High is thirty-three point six, with South Middle to Lambert being sixty-six point four. In the current feeder, that's the current feeder pattern.
Okay, so now we're going to have more
South Middle to Lambert?
Well, this isn't changing their high, this isn't changing their high.
Changing their high, we're changing them out of Riverwatch. So what did you say, sixty-six point four is South Middle?
In the current plan, South Middle to South High is thirty-three point six, and South Middle to Lambert is sixty, you know, the remainder is sixty-six. Thirty-four and sixty-six.
So South Middle splits, but Riverwatch all goes to Lambert.
Right, all of Riverwatch goes to Lambert.
Percent.
So we're going to actually increase
South Middle's
South Middle's percentage to Lambert. Unfortunately.
Well, it's not good either way, South is
Right, we don't have a choice, we have to get students out of Riverwatch.
We actually didn't hear, look at the numbers.
It's so big, I mean, it's close to South, I mean, I just, I don't see anywhere else
Logistically, going from Laurel Springs to South Middle, you turn left and you're down the street, going
Right.
Going down Riverwatch, to Riverwatch right now, James Burgess in the morning, we have, we have sheriffs at there, but that's one of the you know
It's much farther.
Areas we hear discussion about, and there's, there's a brand-new subdivision going in on there, there's more going into Champions Run.
I believe Riverwatch, it looks like it's further on the map, too.
Oh, it's, and it's not, it's not a, not an easy drive, it's a, that road is only going to get busier, and is not slated anytime soon to be improved or widened or anything like that, so this is a better traffic pattern. Shorter distance and a faster distance.
Aberdeen's comment was, there was only six people, but they wanted to move with Laurel Springs, and then the Summer Wind, we're, they're saying Do Aberdeen instead of us, now where's Summer?
Summer Wind is right, like, it's almost connecting to Lambert.
Okay.
Well, the, of the six responses we had from Aberdeen, it was a fifty-fifty split, so
Aberdeen only has six kids?
No, no, we had, my six means
Six responses, okay.
Aberdeen's
Ninety-three kids.
No, Aberdeen has ninety-three, so that's another, that's a large
Right.
And this is the one that, you know, yeah. So Aberdeen's a big subdivision in and of itself. They have a total of three hundred and fifty-seven students, that's a lot.
So on the other side of Old Atlanta Road, opposite of Laurel Springs, we get Summer Wind, you know, we got the clarifications on the on the Nichols Landing and the Nichols View, how much, how far up do we go besides just Summer Wind?
This was, this is what we needed to clarify, on our original notes, and what you see out there, it said Nichols Road, and what we learned Mr. Perkel's not here, that's here. The split is from Summer Wind South, but not, so from north of Summer Wind up is not changing.
Not Nichols Landing, not Nichols View, they will not be
Correct, Miss Crotlo?
They will not be affected. Yeah, they're not be affected, that's what you told us, I wrote it, no change.
We had this question to the committee, because looking at the map, the map is drawn correctly, the verbiage is not as clear as, the map is, so what you see on the map is correct, Summer Wind and South is being switched, where north of there is not.
So the east side, that's the only subdivision is Summer Wind?
Yes, but keep in mind
There's new ones going in here, you're seeing in this blank here.
Yes, there's
Like here, across from Lambert, like if Lambert's here.
Between, on the other side of Summer Wind, on the left side, close to Old Atlanta Road is the Rec Center, and then there is a subdivision that just got zoned in the eighties, eighties, no, yes, and then there's fifty homes that actually kind of straddle that line, so it'll be interesting to see how that shakes out, but
So there'll be two more subdivisions.
Yeah, and then there's another one coming at the end of the street, so well, in the process.
So that blank, those blank areas are going to be filled in.
They're going to fill in. Hopefully, at a lesser density, when
Okay, so those are the closest ones to South Middle. And we have to get children out of Riverwatch, so are there any other options? Are, that's the way I always look at it, is there any they were saying, take St. Marlow, take different places, all this, because St. Marlow is farther from Riverwatch, well, they're also farther from South Middle, you'd have to drive by Lambert to go to South, South Middle.
And drive by Laurel Springs.
Laurel Springs, that's what I meant, yeah, you'd have to drive by them, and we, that's one of the things we try not to do, is drive by one subdivision.
You could actually
To get to another school.
Almost walk to South Middle from Laurel Springs.
From Laurel Springs.
You could.
But it's, it's been, it's been one of those in between, it's right on the line.
You can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see another choice.
I agree with the committee.
Yeah.
And South is actually looking forward, South Middle is actually looking forward to getting a few more students as well.
And again, along the same lines, just look, anything else past Summer Wind a little bit, there's some area in three sixty-two A that's seemingly undeveloped right now.
But it's not, it's
Right.
It's, it actually, yeah, that's where the new ones are coming.
Well, that's what I mean, the new ones, make sure they're districted properly before they come.
If you see a blank spot, just assume there's a lot of houses there.
Oh, yeah, I do, and that's where I'm saying, while we talk about people that are living there I know that's, you know, the high school
Eighty-eight here, fifty here, and these are under construction.
So we need to make sure they're all districted the same way, it looks strange that we're just grabbing Summer Wind, but really, we're making sure that whole thing goes.
It's empty now, but the whole thing is
But actually, the people that live there are well aware
That they'll be going to South.
No, they're well aware there's more coming, they're well aware of the construction.
If you come out there, you turn right.
But let's just make sure they go to South Middle.
Can you talk about three sixty, three eighty?
Yes, yes, that's why it looks so big and blank, but it's
Well, that's where the high school is, right by there.
Right.
The south side of that road is the high school.
But the northwest is
The north has the Rec Center, and then past that, on up that road where Summer Wind is, is all developed, getting ready to be developed.
A lot more coming.
Yeah, so just, to the committee, make sure that we pull those folks when it does come.
Right.
They go to the right place.
Well, they're slated now, well, actually, it'll be interesting to see, I gotta look and see around the map where that splits, because because it's only fifty units, but fifty's fifty. All right.
Okay, any more comments on Riverwatch to South Middle? If not, we'll move on to the other comments on page three. And it starts with, there's a lot of subdivisions, Cobblestone Landing, Delamar, Edgewater, Mashburn Landing, Park Shore, and Sweetwater, their comments are Mashburn should go to Otwell and Central. Or Lakeside should all go to the same high school, this year, seventy students went to Central, and three hundred and twenty went to South Forsyth High School, so there's a real uneven split there. Again, at this time, we're not, we're not doing anything about high schools, we've said this go around, so we're going to have to
Wait, wait two years.
See what's on the agenda when we, when we start on the high school level.
Well, I think, in part, because since we just did the northern redistricting, not, you know, basically two years ago, we're still waiting for those numbers to finish shaking out, because we had the seniors and the upperclassmen, and so that's
Central is growing, right.
We know, still probably needs, what, maybe one more year to cycle out the changes, when, with that being done, and with the new construction we're about to do, then we'll be, we'll have a cleaner slate to work off of, the county will be settled out.
Next high school go around. Camden Woods, move more kids out of Settles Bridge into Sharon, and I think you've seen that we've tried to even them out, is what their idea is.
We had more than one comment, that people were concerned about Settles Bridge, but Settles Bridge, comparatively speaking, was
Was under, was ninety-one percent or something.
Settles said that was over, and they're not, so I'm not sure where that
Where they got that idea, even, because Settles Bridge, we're leaving at ninety-one percent.
We're decreasing about fifty.
Yeah, so we're leaving them at ninety-one percent.
Maybe it's, they know that all that area you were talking about is coming, so they're, yes.
All the construction.
They see it, they see it coming, so I
Because that's exactly where you were talking about, it's coming, right?
It is, and I, so, and there's a new subdivision going in, so I think that
But it's coming to Sharon, too, that's why we can't
Well, I think it helps, goes to the point of why Laurel Springs is better off going to South Middle, so they don't have to be in this congestion that's going on down at Settles Bridge right now.
Right, with all the building here.
So, yeah, they're, James Burgess Road is a hubbub right now.
Yeah.
Next Cascade Run, same thing, worried about overcrowding at Settles, Riverwatch, and Lambert in future years, but we're trying to take care of that, we're doing this.
Amen to that.
But we told them we would go, we would look at every comment, and we would, we would make sure we, like I say, we looked at Champions Run, again, Settles Bridge needs more relief, that's the same area, and again, they see that's where all the growth is, and they see
That subdivision is just on fire, they have two hundred and fifty-two now, but they just keep, they've got more to go.
Right. Coventry, I thought this was really interesting, because they're Whitlow, Vicory, Middle West, we didn't look at, we're not changing them, they want Whitlow, Otwell, and Central, well, that's, if you remember last redistricting, that was a couple times ago, it's that little area along there, those parents fought and fought and fought, that they wanted to stay with their friends, they want to stay with their ball teams, they wanted to stay with Vicory, and it was not a problem, so we gave in, we said, okay, we will let them stay, even though it's a very small, that's where, we're under twenty percent for sure with that feeder pattern, it's the only feeder pattern.
That was one of the areas.
Now they want to stay with friends, now they're saying, everybody's going to Otwell, and we've got to go to Vicory Middle, and we knew it would happen, because you're dealing with families, and their kids grow older, and you've got new families coming in going, why are you splitting us? I can't believe you're doing that to us, so we just wanted to put it in there, Coventry, you just want to say, well, go talk to your neighbors.
And well, since we didn't touch them, that may be just the few that didn't get their way last time.
It could be.
Making comments, so
Making comments, saying
If you open it back up and say, we would move them, then everybody else would come out.
The other side.
And again, when we get the new middle school over by the midway area, who knows what will happen in a new middle, middle and elementary school level.
Certainly something that could be reviewed, could be reviewed in the next
I remember there was a contingent that wanted that at the time, it was smaller than the math.
Right, very small, and we were very worried about that, people coming in. Deer Lake, don't change this, why are out of districts still being approved for Lambert when it is so overcrowded? I don't know if Dr. Evans wants to address the fact that principals work together, and they're the ones that actually, we don't see out of districts at the high school at all.
Yeah, I pretty much, that would just be for program need, otherwise, I don't think the number's actually that large as far as out of district otherwise.
Saying a lot more noes nowadays with the capacity issues.
And isn't our understanding that the principals actually get together in one room? So it's not like they all just kind of do things on their own, say, hey, come on my way, they sit there and look at one by one together and make a command decision one by one, they take it seriously. Thank you.
Good. Greystone Manor, move subdivisions on Bagley Road from Big Creek Elementary to Sharon, we are the only road that feeds South Forsyth Middle School, there, too, that's a very
That's that
One of the other small feeder pattern areas.
I think we talked about them two redistrictings ago.
Yes.
We did.
We looked at that subdivision.
And I think, again, there, we're going to have to wait until the next elementary and next middle, and see if something can possibly be done about there.
Isn't that the same kind of situation of an old Coventry that, two redistrictings ago, or they wanted it that way, and then I think it's, I think, so now we're dealing with the few years down the road.
They're right, they're right east of, east of Big Creek.
They're just, their roads almost across the road from Big Creek.
Right, right, they're right there.
Well, that one triangle, if you look at the, if you look at the feeder patterns there, that triangle is split into four different areas, it is just given the way Mathis Airport runs and one forty-one, it is a challenged area.
But, yeah, they're much farther from Sharon.
See, there's your feeder pattern, I mean, that's how crazy it is.
Right, it's just that small area. They're Big Creek, South Forsyth Middle, and then South Forsyth High, and the rest of Big Creek goes to Piney Grove. Right, they would go to Piney Grove Middle.
So tough.
So, it's, again, we cannot address it at this time, simply because there's not room for them to go to Sharon, because we have to get Dave's Creek relieved to go to Sharon.
Dave's Creek needs the relief more.
Right.
And Big Creek, we're actually, well, we're shifting both ways. I think it's definitely something in the next go-around.
And right now, I think Sharon needs the capacity because of the growth versus Big Creek, I mean, Big Creek, we're leaving right at around capacity, as well as
And Brookwood still has some space, but we know there's, there's a higher number coming in the Dave's Creek, Sharon area
Yeah.
at this time.
So trying to balance it enough, yeah.
Okay, next one.
Forest Brook, where is that?
Oh, this is the Forest Brook, also over there by Coventry, they want the feeder pattern, Whitlow, Allo, Central or Vicory, Vicory West.
Well, what is their feeder pattern now?
They go, current schools, Whitlow, Vicory Middle, and West, and almost all, the rest of the school goes Whitlow, Otwell, Central. But they're on the west side, if you look at the map
So they're in the Coventry feeder pattern.
They're Coventry, and Forest Brook, there's like three or four little subdivisions along there, along Bethel River Road, and we left them all
So these others are ones that are not being changed, but they're just, you know, they wanted to, or, so
Grand Cascade says, move kids out of Lambert to South Forsyth Middle, and we've
South Forsyth High.
South Forsyth High is just as full, they actually have more
We're getting blurry out.
Well, South Forsyth High has actually more out, you know, units, extra units than Lambert has right now.
I think we've discussed them, yeah. Laurel Heights, take more kids out of Settles Bridge, obviously, we've discussed that also.
Um, the Nichols Landing and the Nichols View, we've talked about, that's the subdivisions on the northern end of Nichols Road, and they are not changing.
There's not an area listed, but someone wrote a comment, they were concerned about the hundred and sixty-five kids out of a hundred and twenty-five at Sharon that go to South Forsyth High School and not Lambert, because they are treated differently.
They're treated differently in elementary school because they
Because they do not go to Lambert.
There's such a push for the Longhorn identity with Lambert being right there, so the kids that don't get to go to Lambert are the ones that are made to feel different, that's what they're talking about.
Which is not good, obviously, it's something that you just don't want to hear that that's happening, are we moving kids? We're moving more kids into, out of Dave's Creek, that actually go to South Forsyth High School, I would assume, right? Since that's where they're, I think that's where they're located, to Sharon, so I think we're making that pattern actually better.
And even if it's better, it just needs to be addressed.
It does, it's something that is not
I mean, it's wonderful to the community, but it's, needs to stop in the high school.
High school needs to be
Can I make a comment about that?
Yes.
We actually have already started addressing that.
Okay.
We have already had conversation with, when we met with the principals, at the, we've had a couple meetings with the principals that were initially involved in redistricting, and that was part of some discussion that we've had with them, so that's something that the principal at Sharon's very much aware of, and will, has promised to make a concerted effort to make sure that there's not an issue with that. And I think that it just simply comes from, when you've had a school, that everybody goes to the same high school, it's just easy to do that.
Right, like Riverwatch all goes there.
But then all of a sudden, now you have kids who come, and it's going to be, there's going to be a split feeder pattern, which is not uncommon for a whole lot of our elementary schools, so she will have to be aware of that, and just to make sure that, that we do not have children that feel uncomfortable, and it's, you know, so, but we, we are aware, we've had conversation, and we will work on that, too.
Thank you. Well, we've actually had people that have, either newborns or not even have children, and they're concerned about redistricting for their high school, and in this county, that's just a long ways off.
Right.
Yeah, but we always look at it, too, I mean, I even did it when we finished the shuffle, I would take it and look at the feeder pattern, and just make sure, one last glance, that everything seemed to fall in, we didn't have any outliers, that because of the shuffle, we forgot to think about the high school, but go ahead and start thinking about that even now, for these kids.
Okay, next, me, too, Springmont, build new elementary and middle school now in the south end, right now, if we had the money, we would build it, start tomorrow.
Go ask for money.
We really would. St. Marlow, they're at Riverwatch, no change, request to South Middle, I figure it's one friend, they want to go with their friends.
We had one person comment for that, yes.
So I don't think that's something that, well, obviously, we addressed not to take St. Marlow, because you'd have to drive right by Laurel Springs. The gates at
Loop around, that's on Mathis Airport, across from Laurel Springs, and they just Luberon, that's on Windem, on, on Mathis Airport, uh, across from Laurel Springs, and they just commented they're concerned about growth.
Okay.
We are, too.
We are, too.
Yes, yes. Three chimneys, happy but worried about class sizes and traffic at South Forsyth Middle, Dr. Evans, would you address class sizes just a little bit, and how that works, that has nothing to do with how many kids?
Yeah, class size really is based on the number of allotments given per FTE, so across the district, that is uniform by, by grade level and by school.
So a school can be under capacity, and it will have the same number in a class as a school that's over capacity?
Sure, typically, there, there are anomalies from time to time, uh, you know, if you're, if you're, got five classes, a hundred and twenty-five kids, that makes an easy five, times five is one twenty-five, if you end up with a hundred and forty kids with five classes, it may very well be that you ended up with a class that may be a little bit larger, but, um, but there, there is no correlation necessarily to overcrowding in a school and class size, you know, uh, we've, and that's one of the things that we did this year, in adding deployable classrooms, to ensure that we had classroom space, or instructional units available for all, uh, teachers where we could.
So class size, it's, generally speaking, it's around the same, but year to year, school to school, class, grade level to grade level, it will change.
Well, it could, depending on what your divisor is and the number of classes that you have, but generally speaking, uh, again, there's no difference in the allocation made, uh, in a middle school from one area, from, from a South Middle or to a Riverwatch, based on the number of kids that they have.
The next Waterford Bluff is the same thing, worried about student-teacher ratios. Thank you, Dr. Evans. Uh, Wentworth Manor, use your sploshed money and finish Old Atlanta Road by Lambert, roads are a, on a Board of Commissioner issues, so we'll pass those along, but maybe it's being done.
And actually, again, that was, at the Tuesday work session, the Board of Commissioners are looking at ways to fast-track the expansion of Old Atlanta Road and Sharon Road, and then the Mullinax, Union Hill area, they, in two weeks, we'll know more about that.
Yeah, it's been on the docket for a long time, I watch it, because I drive it every day to work, so.
It is on their splosh, it's just, it's farther down the road, so they're doing what, they're gonna do what they can, which will help us out.
Yes, that's good. Westford Brook is in the Kelly Mill area, they're, they're saying, help, they're overcapacity, they already have two trailers, and they're a very new school. Uh, unfortunately, we can't do anything about that, maybe when Midway comes in, we'll be going as far north as that, the new, the new, we may do some shifting, but not at this time.
May be shifting.
And then I think our last other comment is from Whittington, there's no change, I'm not even sure where they are in the map, there's no change, and they're happy about that, so.
Oh, what a way to end.
It's a good way to end, right? We're happy.
Yeah. Any other comments, or did we miss any areas?
No, but I really appreciate you both compiling this and making it data that we can understand and go through, I know it was hours and hours worth of work, but it.
I guess.
Thank you both for doing that.
And we appreciate all the comments, I mean, if we didn't get those comments, we wouldn't have much to go on, it would just be our opinion, so, we're actually trying to use this to consolidate it and coordinate it, and.
Well, and it really was, having that online input really helps, because it made us able to coordinate that versus phone calls, so this.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Perkel, would you like to sum it up?
Okay, I would love to.
Make sure we're good.
We have, um, so, so based on your feedback this afternoon, and Jennifer has more detailed notes, so don't panic when I just give you the gist of it, because we do have all the details, and we'll make sure we get everything, but there were four areas that you have asked the committee to, uh, consider or look at, and one is the Shepherd's Pond area, Mullinax and Union Road area, that, and we, you talked about Wallace Run and those, and, and in relationship to that, and then the second one was to verify an area, Westgate at Chadbourne, and the third one was the Windermere area, specifically, uh, looking at Osterly at Windermere, and we will look at that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're not clear on what's what there.
Uh-huh, and, uh, the fourth and final one, um, was the developments around Lambert, specifically Summer Winds, and maybe making sure that all of that whole area goes to the right place, and where they go, and the area around Old Atlanta, the Rec Center, and all of that.
Just seeing which.
That they'll be going, we've got enough of the study area.
I think the one, the one of the new ones coming in is, if you're looking out of Summer Wind, half might be on one side and half on the other, so we might wanna figure out how that line, where we best placed.
So, we will, and then, and you accepted the, um, our committee's two recommendations, so we will, um, we will go back, and we will work on that, and develop draft two, and bring that back with, um, an explanation, that's what we did.
Good, then we get to go through all this again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, does anybody have any future agenda items?
I think we've got plenty to do.
I do, too. Okay, next we have executive session, do I have a motion that we go into executive session for personnel?
Second.
Motion by Kristen in a second, by Tom, all in favor, unanimous.